Our next segment is for mayoral candidates. It is our final segment of the evening. Please help me welcome Brian Baum and Dennis Coombs. I believe he is the current mayor. Both are candidates for mayor, yes? Now, candidates, I will ask you, just as I've done the previous candidates, please pay attention to the lights in front of you there. The green light will be lit as you begin speaking. When the yellow light comes on, you have 15 seconds, and the red light comes on, that means you must stop. Each of you will have a minute and a half for an introductory statement. If you could please come in in the back or close the door in the back so we can get started. Thank you so very much, I appreciate it. At the end of that segment, you will then have a minute for closing remarks. I will ask the questions, you will have a minute to respond, and we will rotate questions so each candidate, of course, has the opportunity to answer a question first. The candidate answering the question first will also be given 30 seconds at the end to respond. Also, I will let my discretion give 30 seconds to a candidate to clarify a statement or respond to another candidate's remark. If time permits, I will read a question from the audience. The same time rules will apply, and 30-second rebuttals for audience questions are at my choosing. And there will also be lightning round questions where you are given 15 seconds to answer those questions, and I'll reiterate that at the beginning of the question. And finally, as I said, each candidate will have one minute to make closing remarks. So here we go. Gentlemen, your opening statements, but I guess I should have reminded some of y'all to turn off your cell phones or at least put it on vibrate. That's a nice little melody you got going there, man.
Would you care to dance?
Which one is that one? I might need to get that one on mine. That was a special little tune. Oh, don't know you did any charms. This is good. Don't get started, I can dance too, I can do that. Don't even start.
I've been known to do that.
You know that'll be in the paper tomorrow. It's like, what was Gloria doing in Longmont? Hey, I live all over the state, this is my community too. Y'all have made me feel so welcome, and this town, I was telling somebody, the last time I was here, it was, you guys had like 50,000 people, now y'all are up to like 90,000 people. This town is growing, growing. Telling you, this small-town thing, I don't know where they got that from, y'all are growing. So, anyway, let me get back to it. Opening statements, and we will start with Brian. Please, go ahead, Brian, with your opening comments.
Good evening, my name is Brian Baum. I've been a 30-year resident of the community of Longmont. I'm a husband of 14 years, and my lovely wife is Stephanie. I'm a father twice with my son, who's 10-years-old, Chase, and my daughter, Brooklyn, who is six. And they're waving, thank you. I've been a financial advisor for the last 30 years, and the last 10 years, I've been a small-business owner here in town with my firm, which is Baum &amp; Blockus Wealth Management Services. I have offices here in Longmont as well as in Boulder, and it's afforded me the opportunity to be able to do a lot of wonderful things in the community with regard to nonprofits. And two years ago, I served as your mayor, and it afforded me the opportunity to do that, and it was quite an honor and a pleasure to be able to do that. We accomplished a lot of things in my tenure, and I look forward to accomplishing a lot more. The two years that I had off, I've learned a lot about our community, and it's been interesting to see it from the outside as well as the inside. And I believe that I can offer a lot of great knowledge and expertise in leading this community further during these trying times. So I look forward to serving you once again.
Time.
And my red light's on.
That is correct, that's a really, really good thing. And so, please, Dennis, forgive me. No, I mean, not in a bad way.
Well, Gloria.
No, I don't mean the light being on in a bad way is a really good thing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
I just meant, if I'm talking, let's make sure the light is on, because I would not want to interrupt either of you wonderful candidates. Honey, somebody throw me a rope.
You owe me.
Dennis, I am so sorry, I think I got the names confused in the beginning. You are the current mayor, so please, Dennis, go ahead with your opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight. I am Dennis Coombs, and I'm very proud to be the mayor of this fine city. I'm also founder and co-owner of a very successful restaurant in town, the Pump House Restaurant and Brewery in downtown. Over the last two years, I've delivered on my promise to bring civility and teamwork to the city council. This culture of collaboration and teamwork with council and staff was clearly demonstrated by the city's recent response to the flood disaster. We've accomplished many positive things over the last two years that I'm very proud of. The Roosevelt Park apartment projects is nearing completion. Strong political will is moving the mall development forward after a decade of blight. We have hired an amazing city manager, Harold Dominguez. We've developed a plan to roll out gigabit fiber, broadband fiber, to every home and business in the city of Longmont. We've passed our own legally defensible gas and oil regulations that control gas and oil development by our zoning regulations. I'm a proven leader, and my leadership style is based on inclusiveness, empowerment of ownership, fostering creativity, enhancing teamwork, and accountability. We need a mayor with excellent business skills and people skills, one who will listen to other points of view and make decisions based on data, not emotions. I am that mayor, thank you.
Okay, so we will start out with Brian first, with this first question. How do you see the recent flooding affecting the city budget, and do you feel the city was well-prepared for the disaster financially, Brian?
Well, that's a very interesting question. I think the city was prepared as much as you can be. When you have a natural disaster like this, you know, there are going to be parts of the disaster that you're not going to be prepared for, and you just, you know, you can't always be prepared for everything, especially when Mother Nature gets involved. And so, I think budget-wise, I think the city council made a really good decision in postponing the CIP, and they're being very responsible with regard to it. I'm very proud of the city. I'm proud of the citizens of this community for acting the way they have and helping others. It's been, I think, you know, with tragedy also comes opportunity, and I think that we're finding that out right now, that there's great opportunity for the future of this community to make it even better than it was. So I'm looking forward to the rebuild and leading you through it.
Time. Dennis?
I'm proud of how the city responded to this flood, and a lot of that response comes back to the working relationship and the staff. I mean, Harold Dominguez was amazing, how he built relationships and had the two assistant city manager team in place. I mean, he could say, "Okay, Sandy, I need you to go set up the emergency shelters," and she went ahead and did that, he didn't have to worry about it. You know, we have $148 million worth of damage, but you know, FEMA's paying for 75% of it. The governor's offered, the state has offered to pay 12.5%, so that leaves the city to pay 12.5%. But a lot of these costs, we still have to fund upfront, and you know, we're going to be asked to increase our parks fee for probably a three-year period, and also our stormwater fee for a period of time to rebuild our infrastructure. And I agree that that's what we need to do, and I'm just glad that we've got a city staff and a city council that can work together and make these things happen.
All right, Brian, I will give you 30 seconds to rebut.
You know, once again, I just think that, you know, the city's reacted very well. I'm just very, very proud of the citizens of this community, how they've come and come to the aid of others, and it's just a wonderful place to live, and I believe that serving as mayor again will be a great honor, and I am very, very much looking forward to it.
This next question, gentlemen, is sort of a long narrative, but it sets the stage, so I won't mind repeating it if I need to. A study to assess affordable housing needs for the citizens of Longmont, that work in Longmont was completed. That study indicated a need for an average of 50 affordable rental units per year based on historic production and reflecting a three-to-five-year development timeline from planning to construction for the developers. The subsequent task force spent many months in discussion of the marketing analysis and how best to accomplish its recommendations. Various solutions were presented as ways to pay and sustain this housing. Do you believe it is necessary to continue to subsidizing housing or affordable housing, and if so, what do you believe to be the most equitable way to pay for those additional units again? Various solutions were presented as ways to pay and sustain this housing. Do you believe it is necessary to continue to subsidizing affordable housing, and if so, what do you believe to be the most equitable way to pay for those additional units? Dennis?
Well, I do believe that we need to take a strong look at all the good work that the Affordable Task Force team put together. They made a lot of different recommendations. I think the city council needs to seriously consider all those recommendations. I don't think it's necessary, or maybe the solution probably isn't, to put all of the burden on the developer like was done in the past, but maybe it's a combination, some of it on the developer, some on taxpayers, some on, you know, I just don't know what the right answer is, but I know part of the solution is to encourage basically real estate development and building of more apartments. If we increase our diversity of apartment stock, there's people in the lower-tier departments that can move up to the middle tier, and that would free up some affordable housing in the low tier. So we need to make this community attractive for investors to build, and I've always been pro-real estate and pro-economic development.
Brian?
You know, the city has two programs that are available right now, down payment assistance and rental assistance. And in these times, it's probably not enough, but what was very good was by doing away with the 10% that went to the developers, we were able to approve two major apartment developments that are going on in the city right now. And hopefully, we can streamline those even more so that they can get done to meet the need. It's going to bring a lot of rentals available, and the developers decided that they would come to Longmont because there wasn't a 10% penalty for them to come. So I think we're looking at, historically, that this, you know, penalizing the development community just hasn't worked, and I think that, you know, if we want to get more into affordable housing, that's something that we need to take to the voters.
Time. Dennis, will you, do you want to rebut?
Well, I agree, I trust the voters, so if we do have to look at this thing and ask the citizens, do they want to raise taxes to, you know, make this an affordable housing community, then, you know, I think that's a possibility, that we need to probably look at that as an option. Because, you know, if we make it so that developers can't come here and afford to pencil out their projects, they won't build, and then nobody wins.
Well, let me, and I have a question in regards to that, because there were some questions that were left out in the bowl, and I don't necessarily know if they were brought in, and I'm not sure we're going to have time at the end, but it really ties into this and what you were saying, Dennis, in regards to the current city council voted to end the 10% affordable housing requirement for developers. My understanding, you've got quite a few people who are really struggling right now, that coupled with homelessness, and I know just in the state, you've got a lot of people who are struggling as a result of the flood. And I know for folks who are in office and people who are trying to get in office, the line between the haves and the have-nots got a little bit thinner as a result of that. With people moving to Longmont to find affordable housing, will there be anything that you as mayor can do to help address that issue of helping them find affordable housing? And Dennis, I'll let you take the first stab at that, and then we can go from there.
Well, first off, I want to correct you, it isn't my council that eliminated the 10%, it was my, the previous councillor, council that did that.
Okay. It's saying the current city council, so I'm trying to incorporate, because there were so many questions left in the bowl, so I'm trying to, okay, so the current city council, you're saying, did not vote to end the 10%?
Well, not in the last two years, that was when Mayor Baum was mayor.
Okay.
That did that.
Okay.
So not under my watch did we eliminate that 10%.
Okay. So are you in support of that 10%?
Maybe that's not the right solution, I think the Affordable Housing Task Force came back with a whole bunch of different options, and I think we need to consider those. So as a team, as a collaborative, I like to listen to all the arguments and then come up with the best solution. I do think that we need more affordable housing. I don't know, think that the exact 10% to a developer is maybe the right solution.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Well, you know, one of the reasons why we voted, and it was a council vote, it wasn't just my vote, but the majority of the council voted to end that because we had, I believe, either seven or nine individuals that were, that were having to declare bankruptcy in order to get out of their homes. They had the Affordable Housing Program worked to a certain point, but then they were actually kept in their homes and not able to get out and prosper, and so the only way they could get out of their house was because of the deed restrictions that were put on these homes was to declare bankruptcy, and that's exactly what they were doing. So we were actually putting a financial hardship on people who had been in the program for so long. So the reason why the task force came about is because the old program didn't work, and so I'd be happy to take a look at new suggestions, but to penalize an industry 10% when everybody should, should take on that financial burden, I believe, I think is wrong.
Okay, time. All right, so lightning round question, you have 15 seconds to answer this, and Dennis, we will start out with you. Name your favorite Longmont event.
I like the Peruvian soccer festival. They have great food, great costumes, great sports, I just love our diversity of this town.
Good, and what about you, Brian?
Well, I like the art walks, because there's more of them. There's three of them, and you get to see great art, you get to see a lot of people in the community getting together, and there's music, so it combines two great mediums of art, and it's a wonderful thing to get out and see our friends, so I love that.
Number three, this question, it's not lightning round. Village at the Peaks. Under the circumstances, do you believe that imminent domain procedure was the appropriate route with Dillard's at Village at the Peak? And we will start with you, Brian.
Well, you know, when I was mayor, I visited long and hard with the developer at that time. I also visited a lot with Dillard's. They actually wanted to stay in this community, and as of March, they still wanted to be part of this community. I think we kind of jumped the gun on that. I would have liked to have seen the developer and Dillard's work out their differences. I don't think, I think we could have been a good mediator, but I don't think we should have jumped in like we did. And so I would have taken a different approach. I'm more of a mediator-type of person. I don't like being in the courts, because you lose your ability to control your own destiny, you're leaving your destiny to the, to the courts. So I think I would have taken a little bit different approach. It is what it is right now, and so we're going to have to wait and see what the courts say. So I think I would have backed it up quite a bit and looked at the opportunity to be able to negotiate, and...
Time. Go ahead, Dennis.
I totally disagree with my opponent. I believe that Dillard's really didn't want to stay in this community. You know, we offered them a deal to dry-run the mall for two years, where we would pay their maintenance fees, and if they didn't like it after that, we would give them $4 million for their business. We were going to basically put $1 million to facade improvement into their business, and they basically told us to go pound sand, so to speak. You know, we offered to jump on a plane, once Laura had the ability to negotiate, but you know, Bill Dillard did not want us to come on out and negotiate, so I don't think that they really wanted to negotiate with us. So I think the whole project would have died if we didn't take strong action, we'd have lost our anchor stores, and the whole project would have just gone down in flames. So I think the city council did the right decision.
Brian, you have 30 seconds to rebut.
Well, you know, once again, I think you always try to negotiate, you always try to, try to stay out of the courts. You know, if, if Dillard's wanted to sue the developer, that was one thing, but for the city to step in and say, "Okay, we're going to take this lawsuit on," I think that's inappropriate. And, you know, leave the two, the business owner and the property owner, you know, after all, the property owner came in at a huge discount, about 25% discount to value of the property, and even if they would have had to pay up for it, they still would have got it at a 30% loan-to-value or whatever. So I, the way I look at it is, we didn't do, I think we took the wrong approach, and when you're being advised by a developer to go in the direction that they did, excuse me.
Yes, right, yeah, that's, that was supposed to be 30 seconds, I think we kind of got a little off.
You can give me another one, 30 seconds.
No, that's, I think that was like, okay.
Let's make this fair.
Maybe 60 seconds.
Yeah, that was a little...
You can give me 60.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I was trying to, like, hello, hello, Venus, come on in. So, so let me ask you, let me, let me do this, because this is going to be another lightning round question, gentlemen, and I am going to start with you, Brian. What book are you currently reading?
Oh, geez, I'm not reading a book right now.
Wow.
I was reading, the last book I read was about, you know, it was about executive skills for my children, and, and so that was the book that I was reading.
Thank you, and what about you, Dennis?
I'm reading a book called Captive Audience, it's by Susan Crawford. She's a law professor that's very knowledgeable about the broadband and telecom industry, so there's a lot of insightful information about that industry, and I think it's helping me in my decision.
Time. Question number four. Boy, you guys are something else up here today. What is your general business philosophy, and how do you feel your time on council would contribute to a vital local economy? And Dennis, we'll start with you.
My general business philosophy is to, first off, hire the right people and not micromanage them. If you build a team of collaboration and trust, then you don't need to be there every day and, you know, manage the managers. You know, if you basically are willing to share your profits with the people that help make your profits, your business will spiral upwards, and we've seen that with the Pump House Brewery, it's been highly successful, and that's how our business has always worked since the last couple, or since the first two years, we kind of struggled, but once we adopted the plan to share the profits with the people that help make the profits, we've been hugely successful.
Brian?
Well, my, my business philosophy is to lead. I don't believe you can, you can lead from behind. I think you have to be out in front of any business venture that you do, and I think you have to lead, and I think that's the qualities that I brought to the city council four years ago, for the, for two years, and I believe that those are the qualities that we need now during this time. So my business skills, I run a successful business for 30 years, and I run my own business and am vitally involved in my business for the last 10 years. So I'm a current active business owner, and, and I think it's the best thing to do, and I, and it's, it's tough being retired. I see that in my clients, and I retired at one time, and I just, you need to work, we need to work, and to find those people and to make jobs available here in the community, I think is a great thing.
And Dennis, I believe you have 30 minutes to rebut, or 30 seconds.
30 minutes? Wow.
30 seconds, you know what?
For God's sake, yeah.
Look, you know, Lord have mercy, 30 seconds, I'm just making sure y'all are ready, y'all on it. 30 seconds to rebut, please.
Okay, I've always been a leader. You know, all the projects I ever worked on at Ball Aerospace, they were always ahead of schedule and ahead of budget, and it was because of my collaborative leadership style. People wanted to work hard for me because they knew how much I valued them and the team that I built around me. People just trusted me, and I'm seeing that in the city, in my city council, in the city staff. You know, I like to lead, but my leadership style is to get people to row the boat in the same direction, and that's my philosophy.
Thank you both. This is a question from the audience, and we will start out with Brian first. It says, "With the tremendous cost facing our country in regards to health care, what do each of you plan on doing to support our community to be healthy?" Brian?
Well, I think the things that we have to look at is, is what has driven the health care costs, and what we're finding out is that, that emergency rooms are really driving the costs up, and I think the city has a very good plan, and Mike Butler and I talked about it when I was mayor, about bringing the firehouses together for people to come and, and get scrapes and cuts and maybe even broken bones and things of this nature taken care of. And I think it's a really good approach locally, and I think it will help our costs dramatically and also keep our hospital in, in business. And so, I mean, I think that's, you know, we can do things, and I think, you know, honestly, I've had health issues, and, but I'm getting very good now because I've really taken an interest in my health, and I've dropped 50 pounds and, and the red light's on.
What about you, Dennis?
Well, the Live Well Longmont community has kind of made me their poster child. They've never had a really super-fit athlete mayor before, so, you know, each, each month they've, they had a different theme, so the month of June, they put together these bike teams and made me captain of one of them, and then we, our team tracked our mileage, and I tracked my mileage, and for that month, you know, I did like over, like, around 900 miles of, or our team did over, well, I did personally did about 900 miles, so both our team won the city championship, and I won the overall championship for the most miles ridden by someone from the city for the month of June. So I basically like to, you know, lead by healthy lifestyle, I eat well, I'm very active, and my health is my most valuable asset, so if I can just transfer, if everybody adopted my lifestyle, we wouldn't have a health problem.
Whoa.
Okay.
Do I get to rebut?
That is, do, do you want to rebut that?
Whoa, absolutely.
Go ahead, go, go ahead and rebut, yes, you do, doggone it.
I would love for everybody to know that I was a varsity letterman in tennis in my, my college, and I was also the captain of our tennis team for two years. I am an athlete. I would also have you know I was in the marching band. I played bass drum. That also, I believe, makes me an athlete.
Yes, thank you so very much.
You're very welcome.
Yes, that's very good.
I'd be glad to elaborate on that if anybody liked to.
Ooh, you guys are something else, that is something else. I will ask one final question, and it really deals with politics on the national level. As two individuals who are well-versed in politics here locally, yeah, breathe deeply, Dennis, because you know, what frustrates you the most about what you see on the national level when it comes to politics? And how do you think you, at the state level, can affect change? Because otherwise, why would you be running? And we'll start out first with you, Dennis, and then come to you, Brian.
Well, first off, I think everybody's upset with, you know, the fact that our Congress is being held hostage by, you know, the Tea Party, essentially, and the Bonner will not allow the vote to come to Congress. You know, I think if we just had a straight-up-and-down vote, this issue would be over, and then basically, if we had a straight-up-and-down vote, basically, the majority would, would rule. So, you know, I just, I just wish that national politics was more collaborative and there was more teamwork, because right now, we're not getting anything done, and everybody's suffering.
And Brian, what do you say?
Well, I, politics are horrible, and we've seen it here, even in our community, from time to time. The, you know, the best part of, of being in politics is right here, where I am right now, being the mayor of a community. The best work is done on the local level. The national level, it's just, it's polarizing, even at the state level, it's polarizing. You can't get anything done in either places, but you know what? We do good work here in this community, and our council works and our, our staff works together, and I'll tell you what, we accomplish a lot. So the best part of, of politics is on the local level. I have no desire, I was asked after I left office two years ago, for every different office you can imagine, and I said, "You know what? Why would I want to butt my head up against the wall? I just don't want to." I think the best work is right here locally, and this is where we... I think the best work is right here locally, and this is where we can make a difference nationally, right here.
All righty, gentlemen, you have a minute and a half each, or, excuse me, a minute to give your closing statements. And Dennis, we will start with you.
Okay. As mayor, I promise that I will listen. We may not always agree, but I will treat you with dignity and respect. I commit to you that I will lead the council and work with the city staff and other community stakeholders in a collaborative manner that has a clear vision and mission for all of Longmont. As an engineer by trade, a businessperson by practice, I understand that sustainable change takes assessment and action. In order to lead into the future, you have to predict the future, plan for the future, and sometimes let go of the past. That is exactly what I'm doing as a member of the Platte River Power Authority Board. My 17-year Pump House Brewery business partnership, 36-year marriage, stellar 30-year career in aerospace industry, and my two years as mayor has clearly demonstrated my team-building and leadership ability. Today, I ask for your vote, and I will be very honored to receive it. Thank you.
Brian?
Well, I'm going to address something that wouldn't ordinarily be addressed at a debate like this, or whatever you want to call it. But it's the big elephant in the room. The big elephant in the room is that I have stage-four renal cell carcinoma. And I want you to know that on Tuesday, I found out that my cancer has been stopped cold.
Yay. That's good.
So, some of you have wondered whether or not I am capable of being able physically to address this community and to lead us into the future. And I want you to know that I am absolutely capable of doing so and look forward to doing so. I want to read something to you by a breast cancer survivor, Brandy Sellers. "No one would be inspired if I sat at home in the dark. Others can't use my strength as their own if they don't know what I possess inside." Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes, let's give our candidates a round of applause, please. Thank you, Dennis, and thank you, Brian. That concludes our third and last segment for the 2013 City Council Debate hosted by the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce and sponsored by Comcast, the Plaza Hotel and Conference Center, and The Times Call. We appreciate your participation tonight. Have a good and wonderful evening, and thank you all for coming out. Thank you.